And whether or not we approve their budget. If they want to cut and slash the police department and put it down to whatever figure they want to use, then that's their prerogative when we do the budget. But again, that's how you decide whether or not you got, you know, your police officers you want. It's during the budget. Otherwise, the mayor, through the police chief, hire the police officers according to the budget and numbers we have. So, you know, what we're doing here is just a go around, and I've heard this before, the last year of wanting to cut the police department and the fire department by 30%.
What's your point of order?
That hasn't even been addressed.
Okay, your point of order is not that.
The best was the...
He said, "Your..." Can I go...
You can finish.
Thank you. And so...
And I can do that, thank you.
That's why Mr. DeVito was allowed to park...
Go ahead, Mr. Berry, he's interrupting.
We can... The city council deciding the number of police officers, and we do that by the budget, and I'm talking about that. And that's where we are, you know?
Ms. Ball.
I'm really perplexed as to... About the fact that we read this book, it's the handbook for the Arkansas municipal officials. State statutes tell us we shall do this and we shall do that. We shall have a sewer committee, commission. We shall, we shall have an ordinance that says how many police officers, subordinate police officers can be hired. And we have people sitting at this table who say, "Oh, well, you know, it's just a state statute. Oh, well, you know, it just says that in there."
Point of order, point of order. Now, that she is saying that there's people at this table...
Does she make a point?
I'm working on it. Thank you.
Get to the point, please, so we can carry on. We have other business.
My point is, state statute says the city council shall by ordinance state how many subordinate police officers should be hired or shall may be hired. I'm saying, we should follow state statute. I will say it over and over. We should follow state statute. We should follow state statute. I don't care how you want to rationalize things and say, "Oh, it's okay, this and that and this and that." We should follow state statute. Mr. Berry, we should follow state statute. Thank you. That's my point.
I make a motion that Chief Hyatt come in at our next meeting and tell us how many police officers we think that need.
I think it's already motioned.
There's already a motion.
We'll have a motion in a second.
Mr. Raphael.
Mr. Seth.
You had your hand up.
Oh, we... I was just gonna say, I think, I agree with Mr. Berry, the place to do this is in the budget. If you want to do something with the police department, do it in the budget.
Ms. Ball.
But I have no problem with Earl showing up.
Call for the question.
And so, so you agree that we shouldn't follow state statute?
Call for the question.
We should go along and do it however we want and screw state statute.
That is doing it.
No, it is.
Write your comments to the chair, Ms. Ball.
And you're just...
Ms. Ball!
Yes, sir.
Do write your comments to the chair and not to him.
I think we should follow state statute, and I think it is, I think it is very sad for people at this table to be on record saying they don't want to follow state statute. And we got one of them running for state, for West State Legislature, and he doesn't want to follow state statute.
Ms. Ball.
What's up with that?
Your point has been established.
Thank you.
There's already motion on the floor. In a second. Mr. Berry, you had your hand up.
I just called for the question.
Okay. Would you please read the motion?
Calling the question takes a second and a vote.
You're right.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, would you please read the motion, so we can get on to business?
Have the police chief provide the number of officers he needs to run for a 12-month period. By the next meeting, that was with Ms. Balance amendment, amendment to Mr. Pownell's motion, and Ms. Lynn Blad seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
The motion wasn't read as it was made, I'm sorry.
All right, restate the motion.
Mr. Pownell made a motion to have the police chief provide the number of officers he needs to run for a 12-month period. At the first meeting in November, Ms. Balance modified that motion to be at the next meeting, and Ms. Lynn Blad seconded.
Yes, sir.
The purpose was to have the chief here, not have a piece of paper that says 16, 12, 9, whatever, we need to be able to have a good discussion.
I don't think it was a motion to have him here.
It was in the motion that I made.
Did I not just read that?
No, you didn't. The motion that he provide by the next meeting, and she amended, or by the first meeting in November, and she amended it to the next meeting.
And here that...
To be physically present to provide and discuss?
Yes.
Will that work?
That's fantastic. Once, once it's corrected there in the minutes, then we'll reread it, and we'll vote on it.
Mr. Pownell made a motion to have the police chief be physically present to provide information about the number of officers he needs to run for a 12-month period. The first meeting in November, Ms. Balance amended that motion to the next meeting. Ms. Lynn Blad seconded.
Any further discussion on this? If not, then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No.
Aye.
Four, one.
Moves us on finally to number five.
Let me discuss.
Let me finish. Number five is a letter from John Cross, reference to Eureka, Mr. Pownell and Ms. Lynn Blad. Now, motion to discuss.
Some moves.
Floor's open. Mr. Pownell.
I'd ask at the last meeting, there had been a, I believe, a letter to the editor in one of the local papers, also the letter from Mr. Cross, expressing the dismay of blocking the parking slots. And I just want to bring this. This is not a legislative matter. I think it's something that the administrative side needs to look at because they are not helping our businesses at all downtown, nor our revenues, because if we got, last word I heard, we got maybe an hour's worth of parking money for losing the whole parking lot, both sides of the courthouse during one of the, I don't know if it was Classic Car Weekend or whatever, but I think that's something that really needs to be looked at. Again, it's in code, so God forbid we follow it. That whatever event it is, if they request use of the parking lots, that they're supposed to be paying for whatever the going rate is for each of those spaces that they request. And it doesn't necessarily just relate to the Eureka, so they won't feel like they're being picked on. It happened during Classic Car Weekend when they took up the whole parking lot.
You're getting off base, Mr. Pownell. You're getting off base.
This is a matter of discussion.
This is a letter from John Cross, reference to Eureka. It has nothing to do with any other events. According to what the agenda says. I'm playing by your rules. I'm just...
You're trying to stifle conversation.
Okay. So, and I have some facts here, but I'm not going to read into you now.
Mr. Cross, I tried. Thank you very much.
And it is an administrative issue, it's not a council issue.
Here's, here's your mayor.
It's me, right here, taking care of business. Moving on, this is number six, voluntary cemeteries.
I think I have one.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
I'd like to find out how much money the city did make and what the Eureka people paid for the parking spaces.
We'll get that.
And I'd also like to know, you know, the, when I was on council before, there was a lot of talk about fire lanes and a fire lane behind the auditorium that blocked for the entire weekend. And I came through town trying to make a turn up on the Spring Street, the way you have to come around through here, and I couldn't even get through. So, do you know how much they paid per parking spot?
No, you don't?
You don't know that?
No, it's just now been determined, it's administered by Mr. Pownell. So, that's what we'll take up. And I have a report next to him.
So, you will have a report?
Yes, absolutely now. Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thanks for being succinct and...
I'm sorry? You have a comment, Mr. Pownell? Oh, it's under the breath. Okay, good. All right. Now, we were on number six, voluntary cemetery tax.
Move to defer to next week, meeting second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven, readjustments in water rates, vacation rate.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
I want you to defer this to the next meeting because our finance director is getting me figures that deal with the vacation, with the readjustment of the vacation water rates.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Number eight, second quarter financials, according to also code annotated 14-43-506. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Discussions open.
This information will be in the clerk's office if you want copies of any of it, or just come and read it. Of course, there's payroll, bank reconciliation, the clearing account, which is expenditures, receipts, that is incoming funds, and this debt service book, which will migrate back to the finance director's office immediately, but it's still accessible. So, there is your second quarter report, and very soon we'll be able to give you the third quarter report.
Any further?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You are welcome.
Moves us on to number nine. Discussion on the annual ordinance levying taxes within the city.
Move to discuss.
Second. Floor's open. Sir, I can't hear you, sir.
Is there a resolution?
There's an ordinance.
An ordinance?
Yes.
It's right here. I went ahead and printed these because I didn't know who would be printing them at home. Sent an email out last week explaining, and I'll put it on the calendar earlier next year, so we won't need to do it with an emergency clause. But the court of court has to have this for their first meeting in November in order to fulfill their duties for distributing taxes. So, it's really a formality. In case you don't have one, let me just pass this pile down. And I will do my best to put it on the calendar earlier next year.
Ms. Lynn Blad.
I'd like to make it clear to the citizens listening to the meeting that this is not an increase in taxes, this is just a refund of taxes that we already pay on our personal property and real estate, and as, as our clerk treasurer said, this is just a formality, it's not a raise in tax.
Thank you.
Make a motion to sign ordinance and put it on first reading.
Second. Wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five, zero. Okay, number two, one, six, four. Ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, be it ordained by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, levy on personal property, a tax of 4.4 mils on the dollar is hereby levied on all real property situated within the corporate limits of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the following purposes. The general fund, point 0038. Number two, fireman's relief and pension fund, point 0006. Section two, levy on real property, a tax of 4.4 mils on the dollar is hereby levied on all real property situated within the corporate limits of the city of Eureka Springs for the following purposes. One, general fund, point 0038. Two, fireman's pension and relief fund, point 0006. Section three, collections. The 4.4 mils above levied on the personal property are to be collected at the regular collection of taxes by the collector of Carroll County, Arkansas, at the same time and in the same manner that state and county taxes are collected in the year 2013. The 4.4 mils above levied on real property that are to be collected at the regular collection of the taxes by the collector of Carroll County, Arkansas, at the same time and in the same manner that state and county taxes are collected in the year 2013.
Move to approve ordinance two, one, six, four, on its first reading.
Second. Wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? There's an emergency clause attached to this. Mr. Berry.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance two, one, six, four, on a second reading by title only.
Second. Wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suspended, real sorry. Roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Blad?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Five, zero. Emergency clause, section four, that due to the meeting...
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't vote on the emergency clause.
On second reading. On second reading.
You are correct. Thank you. Suspend rules, place on...
Emergency clause we never mentioned. I just mentioned the fact that we had.
You are right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, now I understand. Okay.
Move to approve ordinance two, one, six, four, on second reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Did we read it for the second time by title only?
Hang on a second.
Not yet, but we're going to.
Assign number. You put that. You move to approve?
No.
That passed five, zero. And you moved to suspend the rules?
Okay.
And place on second reading by title only?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me?
We made our motion when we were...
Okay. So, now we're reading the title?
Now, we're reading it.
For the second time. Okay. Ordinance number two, one, six, four, and ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Now, we can approve ordinance two, one, six, four, on a second reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Five, zero.
On second reading. Then we'll go for the third.
Is there any reason why we can't wait until the 22nd? Today's the third reading and final reading for this emergency clause?
Yes, well...
Does that...
If they need it by November.
I spoke with on the phone. I asked her if, if there was a way we could avoid it, and she said she really needs it.
By November.
When's the November?
It will make her life easier if she gets it earlier, but it will not be the end of the world if she doesn't get it until the very, very, very end of October. It will not be the end of the world.
It'll be the 22nd.
Mr. Pownell?
I'm on the third one of the reading.
It's not just the meeting, there's preparatory work that has to be...
When is the meeting?
I don't know the date, Mr. Pownell.
Based on the time, timeframe that we usually have and the circumstances, looking at third reading on the 22nd with emergency clause, there's no reason why they can't even have an answer a couple days later, whatever they form they needed. And I think, even though Ms. Lynn Blad mentioned that there's no changes in people's taxes, I think some people will still assume that we're passing something to pull up under their whatever, as we've done on a couple ordinances earlier this evening. I think this is another one where we hooze this. If we have adequate time, then we delay the third reading.
Ms. Balance, head your hand up.
I changed my mind. Thank you.
Ms. Lynn Blad, did you hear your hand up? Okay. Any further on this? Then we are to agenda setting.
No.
I have ten.
November, December meetings.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
For the... Yes, sir.
The way, the way the meeting's scheduled since we went from Thursdays to Mondays has caused us to lose two meetings in the final two months of this administration. We have, the first, the first meeting in November is on Veterans Day, and I don't think anybody in City Hall wants to come and let us in to have a council meeting on a city holiday.
I will.
And we also let, with the change, the second meeting in December is on December 24th. Past practice has been, in a lot of cases, just to cancel that meeting. I think this table has enough items to complete in the next four meetings that we need to come up and reschedule those two canceled, possible canceled dates instead of just canceling them.
Mr. Berry.
I don't know why we can't have a meeting on the 12th and 26th.
24th. It's Christmas Eve.
That's November 12th and 26th.
I said November.
You said...
First Monday, November, and the second...
You won't let me talk to other people, and here they are, walking across the table. Come on, dude.
They're not supposed to be talking to...
I'm not talking to them.
Mr. Berry is trying to, he's looking at his phone, trying to figure out the date.
I understand.
I'm fine with two meetings in November, like we had 12th and 26th. If we need to schedule a meeting in December, 10th and, or the 10th and 17th or something, we can do that.
Ms. Ball.
May I direct a question to Mr. Pownell, please?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I understood. I thought I heard Mr. Pownell say that one of the meetings was on Chris, that the December, the second meeting in December would be on Christmas Eve? Yes, sir? Well, did we not, at the beginning of the year, decide that there would be one meeting in November and one meeting in December?
Yes, we did.
We did in December, but we could have two in November.
We could, but I was just confused. I was just confused because he said the second meeting in December would be Christmas Eve, and I thought we decided to only have one meeting in December. So, I was just, just clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I can stand corrected, but I think that was based on when we were having meetings on Thursday and then it carried forward to year 2012. If that's the case...
Neither one. I get such Veterans Day.
This is February? Oh, okay.
Tulip, y'all. Whatever you decide.
So, the city hall's closed on Veterans Day.
And December, for clarification, I don't want to cut into anybody's holiday, but we're due the budget on the first of December. That means we got 31 days to work on it, and if we can't make any headway, then we're unable to do our due diligence to at least that far.
Ms. Ball.
All right, so, all right, so, November 17th is, no, November 12th is Veterans Day? Is that what I'm understanding here? Okay. So, City Hall will be closed on Veterans Day?
It's a holiday, and it's normally closed, but it doesn't mean we can't have a council meeting.
Today's a holiday, too.
Today's Sunday.
It's a city or state holiday.
So, what's council?
So, that would entail someone opening the council room for us, and it would entail the television crew. And you said you would open City Hall?
Absolutely. For the meeting.
What about you?
Need someone to come in?
Oh, yeah. I'm fine with it.
It gets holiday day.
Christmas Eve, I'm not here.
I won't be doing Christmas Eve either. Christmas Eve's supposed to be family.
Okay, so, I move that we go ahead and have, if we need a motion for it, go ahead and have a meeting on November 12th. And just keep up with our schedule since we've got a lot of big things that we need to do with.
Should we stop at just one meeting in, in November? Should we have two meetings in November? Should we have two in December?
What?
Well, we, we'd get that budget.
I, I don't feel any need for us to not have meetings. I think it's kind of ridiculous, even if we have to schedule one on another day, but we've got things to do, and, you know, if we were having our, still having our city council meetings on Thursday, then, you know, in December, we wouldn't have a problem at all.
We would in November. We'd have...
Yeah, we would in November, but we wouldn't in December, so it's...
With the standing surveys at the first of the year, when, when they're going to meet?
It was decided at the beginning of the year. Is that what you're asking me?
Yes. In a resolution?
No.
Uh, no.
Okay.
It was, it was set whenever council set its rules, but, you know, we haven't followed half of them, but other than second, fourth, maybe, of the month.
Ms. Ball.
So, I make a motion that we go ahead and have a meeting on November 12th at our usual time in our usual spot.
Second.
Made in second. Any further discussion? Okay, this also addressed December. What are you going to do about December?
Let's vote on...
Okay. All right. One at a time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so now...
Mr. Pownell, did you just vote no?
Yes, I did. Does that not surprise you, Madam Clerk?
I wish you would have voted fourth another day.
You too. Mr. Berry.
You know, I'm, I think we can decide on the 10th when we want to have, I mean, if we want to go ahead and have a meeting on the 17th, the next week, depends on if we can get the information together, whatever we need. You know, we can have two meetings in December. Obviously, the 24th won't be a satisfactory time, but we can always have extra meetings whenever we need.
Mr. Pownell? Mr. Pownell, please. It's not necessary to do this.
It's part called kettle back.
It's not necessary for that either. We're trying to take care of business, I thought. Ms. Lynn Blad.
It's probably out of order, but Mr. Pownell is upset because it's Veterans Day, and I can understand that, because all these activities that are going on for veterans, and he is a veteran.
Perhaps we should move to...
So, perhaps we should think about moving it off the 12th and move it to another day that would compete, and that would be fun.
I would move to reconsider.
Move to reconsider.
Pownell? I'll refrain from participating. If I decide I need to, to be a veteran that day, I don't want to put any kibosh on city government. God forbid. I'm a veteran, and I think it's my duty to do so, so I'll be here.
I would move to reconsider.
Second.
What is the next Monday after the 12th? Or what is the first Monday?
5th or the 19th.
I would move to...
I want to be available on the 5th.
So, the 19th, or...
Does this...
We're voting in here.
On what day?
How about a night? Tuesday? Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so we have no motion other than Ms. Lindblad?
Thank you for your service.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so we now have no motion. We have no dates.
Yes, we still have November 12th.
November the 12th, back on the agenda, okay. 6:00 PM regular time, jury room. So shall it be? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you. You lost me way back there. Okay, so now, December. Mr. Pownell?
Move to suspend the rules and delete the December decision until a later date.
Second.
Second. We have to roll call it, suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, and say that again, please?
Delete the discussion of the December date.
What... Can I ask you a question? Why are we suspending the rules? We're not having, we only have one meeting anyway.
Forget it.
If I look back, may I say something?
Yes, please.
If I look back in the notes, um... The only vote that was taken early on in this discussion, it was divided up between November and December, and the vote was on the November date. And so, I, I don't really see a need to suspend the rules because it was split up.
That was my question.
Mr. Pownell?
Well, it was on the agenda as discussion of the November and December meetings. So, if I feel that we need to wait for more information to discuss when we're going to have the December meeting, I would think I should have to request suspension of the rules to delete the discussion of the December meeting on this particular agenda. If not...
You go for it. One way or the other. We, we can, we can suspend the rules and do a roll call vote.
Do it.
Yeah. All right, stand by.
Ms. Lindblad? To suspend the rules and delete discussion of the December... Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Certainly.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. The charge setting is now open. Motion to discuss.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Let me throw one in here real quick. We need to put the municipal league attorney on the agenda to discuss the Emily Clark case.
In public?
Absolutely. You want to address counsel?
Okay.
That was the request from Mr. Weaver. To y'all, to me, to y'all. Anything else?
Is that, is he going to be here for the next meeting?
Yes.
Well, since he will be here, I was going to request the city attorney, and I'd like to have a discussion with the municipal league attorney in regards to misfeasance in local government.
Second.
Anything else? Ms. Lindblad?
Pownell? Move adjourned.
Hold a candid adjourn. We, we have counsel comments.
Second.
You knock it out, then.
He did, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh.